Today is unlike other days, we're starting off out of the gate work session mode. So, we're gonna just go ahead and turn it over. I'll tell you what, before we get started there on this morning, we're talking about the Veterans Program and the services associated with that. I think as a result of that, I think we should all rise and say the pledge of flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. So Jeff, I suppose I will turn it over to you, Director of Public Works, Jeff Castigui, and we'll let you, no pun intended here, lead the charge.
There we go. All right, Commissioner, we are here today for a work session to discuss the future makeup of our Veterans Transportation Services. The program is fully funded from the General Fund to provide a veteran with caregiver to go to and from any VA, to and from any VA medical center in Maryland and West Virginia. As you remember, we were in front of you a couple of weeks ago, asking for an additional forty thousand dollars of funding to finish out the remainder of fiscal year nineteen. Next year, we're projecting the program to be running possibly north of two hundred thirty thousand dollars if we continue operating the way we're running today. This is a ninety thousand dollar increase from FY nineteen, from the updated budget of a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. This change is due to an increase of door-to-door services, and we need to dedicate staff to this program. Today, we're asking for direction on how you want us to proceed with these services as the program continues to grow. Today, we will begin with a brief history of the Veterans Program by Stacy Nash, our grants coordinator. Information on our qualifications of the process for the veterans to determine if our, that the veterans could be using our services, whether they're going from a shuttle or from door-to-door services will be presented by Gina Valentine. And we'll follow back up with Stacy for discussion on the current ridership numbers and how our program is running today. And we'll open up to questions and any discussions from that point. Some of the direction we're gonna need today from the board is for our upcoming FY twenty budget. And some of the items that we will need to discuss is, do we continue our contract with a cap on services based on the dollar amount? The discussion with that is in our contract is if we hit the cap and we don't have any additional funding, at that point, services stop. If the services needed on a given day exceed the capacity, either by vehicle capacity or by drivers, is the denial of services acceptable? Door-to-door services may need to move from the Veteran Shuttle to the CTS Demand Response Services to meet the appropriate needs of the riders. This will also come at an added cost to the program. So these are a few things that we need to, we'll need to iron out today. I know there's been some ideas of some other programs in and out of the county. But I think to get things started, let's, I'm gonna pass this over to Stacy to provide you a little bit of the history of the program of how we got Veterans Services as we got here today.
Okay, before we do that, for the new folks, could we just at least go around to that part and introduce who everyone is at the table?
I'm Celine Steckel, the Bureau Chief of Aging and Disabilities with Carroll County Government.
Gina Valentine, Aging and Disability Services Supervisor with the Bureau of Aging and Disabilities.
Stacy Nash, Transportation Grants Coordinator.
Jeff Castigui, Director of Public Works.
Lisa Watkins, Executive Director, Carroll Transit Service.
Crystal Weinbrenner, Director of Operations, Carroll Transit.
Christine Gager, Director of Citizen Services.
I think we can stop now, you all know. There's two folks in the background who play a major part in a lot of statistics and a lot of the great things that we do, so just to let the folks know who's back in the background, please.
I'm Captain Benjamin Badu.
Scott Graff, Public Works.
And there's, what's your name again? I'm sorry. Zaleski, isn't it?
Zaleski.
All right, thank you. And I don't know that we've had the official opportunity to say welcome to you. We've seen what's-her-name here a lot, so, but we'd like to officially say on behalf of my colleagues, welcome to CTS, and we look forward to what you bring over there, working in conjunction, of course, with Crystal, who has done a tremendous job over there as well. So, thank you, thank you both for being here, we appreciate it. Okay.
Off to Stacy.
Stacy.
I'm gonna give you the entire history of what we've been able to pull together. If I get long-winded, throw something at me. The shuttle originated in 2012, Board of County Commissioners supporting a twenty-five-thousand dollar match towards a pilot program to assist CATS at the time with vouchers for transportation of, for veterans. Service began November thirteenth, 2012, and at the time was planning to run through the end of fiscal year thirteen. It was funded by a new Freedom Grant, which was awarded to CATS in conjunction with the match to the county. Department of Social Services was involved, they completed the registrations, and we believe they also held the money and paid CATS. Riders at the time boarded the shuttle at either Town Mall in Westminster or the Carroll Town Mall in Eldersburg. It was operated three days a week, on Tuesdays and Thursdays went to Baltimore, and on Wednesdays went to Fort Dietrich. In mid-year FY thirteen, the budget to DSS was increased to twenty-five thousand for the Veteran Shuttle services. An additional ten thousand was provided to DSS for the service in fiscal year fifteen. In fiscal year sixteen, twenty-five thousand was transferred from DSS to Citizen Services. When CTS took over the contract in fiscal year sixteen, the shuttle ran for five days a week and transported veterans to four approved destinations, Green Street, Lock Raven, Fort Dietrich, and Martinsburg. The shuttle pickups are currently at the Westminster Senior Center and the Shoppers in Eldersburg. Veterans are encouraged to schedule their medical appointments between ten a.m. and two p.m. Mid-year fiscal sixteen, twenty-five thousand was transferred to Public Works. In 2016, staff of Bureau and Aging Disabilities began completing the Veteran Shuttle registrations and qualifying individuals for home pickup. Veterans who do not drive or do not have transportation are encouraged to find a way to get to the shuttle pickup. Gina will give you additional information on that bidding process. In fiscal year seventeen, budget included seventy-five thousand for the program and Public Works. Additional funding of thirty-one thousand was provided mid-year for the purchase of new Freedom Vans. The alternate destination requests started increasing in fiscal year seventeen as the VA contracted with private medical practices to complete exams with veterans who filed compensation claims. The exam is required in order for the claim to be processed, and that seems to be the result in the increase of additional destinations. The fiscal year eighteen budget was a hundred and five thousand in Public Works. Fiscal year nineteen budget was its own budget for veterans, at a hundred and two thousand. That was an overall decrease to the budget due to transferring insurance to legit, but we were just back in front of you asking for another forty thousand, so not really a decrease. Previously, CATS had been charging veterans for home pickup at seven dollars and fifty cents a pickup, but that practice stopped when the Commissioners became aware that we were charging them.
So to talk about the registration process, we have a form, and through that process we verify that a veteran, you know, is qualified, they are a veteran in fact, and we also verify their Carroll County residency, and we collect documents and keep those in their file. For the home pickups, we have a form also, there's always a form, and so on that form, the options that are listed on the form is, are, sorry, no driver's license, no transportation to the shuttle pickup site, or a disability, and we obtain verification of that disability. We do encourage veterans, if they don't have a driver's license, or they have no transportation to the shuttle pickup site, to find other means, you know, do they have a family member that can take them to the shuttle pickup site? Do they have a friend that can take them? So we are encouraging them to find other ways. And so, I mean, that's basically the process. I went back and looked at the registrations since we started taking them in fiscal year 2016, and to date, there's thirty-six veterans that are approved for home pickup. There are times that a veteran may have a surgery, such as an eye surgery, that they're not permitted to drive, and so that, like, on those instances, then I contact Crystal at CTS and ask, you know, if they are able to accommodate that for that instance only, and so that's how we work through that. So there are some times that a veteran may ask for home pickup on a limited basis. So that's really the registration and the verification process.
When we were charging for the home pickup, were there complaints?
Well, I don't know that there were complaints back then, but we didn't know it was happening, and so then when we heard it was happening, we were kind of sharing that information, and the Board at the time was not pleased with that because they indicated that it wasn't a free shuttle then, because none of us, you know, between our agency and the Board were aware that that was happening.
This is, our best, our best understanding was back in CATS, back at the beginning of the, when the program first started.
And what were they charging?
Seven fifty each, so it was like fifteen dollars round trip.
Regardless of where they lived?
What is the charge for the, for the, our system, yeah, right now?
The average cost to go to a shuttle stop would be four dollars. That would be the average. Not many people live beyond that five mile radius.
If that person drives themselves to the facility, doesn't the VA provide funding?
There are instances in which the VA will qualify individuals, I brought that criteria with me. They have to be service-connected at a rating of thirty percent or more, or if they are traveling for treatment for a service-connected condition, they receive a VA pension, or their income does not exceed the maximum annual VA pension rate, their income does not exceed the maximum annual VA pension rate, again, I'm sorry, I don't know why that's listed twice, or they're traveling for a scheduled compensation or exam.
So that's saying is pretty much everybody qualifies?
I can't really answer that, because I don't, it's...
I understand what you've shared. It sounds like everybody is qualified, because scheduled appointments, thirty percent of the month, most of our veterans go to, you know, to health care, I would expect a thirty percent of them, I'm not that yet, but, you know, hands over. But it sounds like those are all pretty solid, pretty qualified people, qualified veterans. Reimbursement from you, I don't know, it's a legal thing.
Right, and the reimbursement goes directly to the veteran, does not, cannot pass, we can't be a middle person.
But that's not being accessed right now, right?
By the veteran or by the organization? By the veteran or, or us?
It would be by you, by veterans.
Right, we wouldn't know that unless we actually asked that question.
And then maybe just a method is, well, it's a sort of, but asking, as they get on the shuttle, are you aware of this program that the VA has to compensate for travel costs? If the answer is yes, great, feel free to share with us, or if the answer is no, give them the fact sheet saying how to do it, and just continue to build that partnership. You know, I don't think it's a lot of folks, you know, that we're talking about, and they're repeat, you know, folks, so if you know them, if you drive through them, you know, it's a good idea.
Right, one of the questions would be is, and I knew that question would come up, because I knew, as we talked, also Commissioner, you know, all the Commissioners. At that point, do we start charging the veteran for them to get, when they get reimbursed, they're kind of, they're getting reimbursed by the veteran?
I would do...
By the VA, or just let them get the reimbursement?
Honestly, I would start slow, and, you know, the hardest part about the VA is the VA. I mean, I'm very serious, is that the lack of communications on programs that exist for the VA, for our veteran community. So, I think providing an education service from the shuttle, you know, through whoever, I mean, let's start slow, and you know what, they can make a buck doing it good on them, you know, and then build from there on, okay, here's how we can look at reimbursements, you know, for funding. But it's not always about making a dollar or saving a dollar, you know, it's about quality of life for our veterans, and that's what you're doing, better than anyone I know of. So, I think that's what I would recommend, you know, not, not always looking for, what's the return on how to make a dollar, you know, or, let's educate first.
So, yeah, okay, thank you. What I'll do is, we'll take a quick moment here, I'll pass this back over to Stacy just for a moment, to explain the handout that we provided with the map, and also provide, show you the graphs, just a couple of numbers of our program, just as part of our discussion as we're moving through today.
Okay.
Or, no, Scott, I know Scott put the graph again.
He put the map together. The map is from July, we picked July, just because it was our average month for the last six months, so it gave you a kind of good idea of where everybody was coming from. Most, most of our people go to Baltimore, as you can tell by this map, but it also shows that our home pickups are very scattered, since we're only picking up at the Westminster Senior Center and in the Shoppers in Eldersburg, all the other little dots are home pickups, and they are very spread out and going in very different directions. Our graphs, just wanted to give you an idea of the last three fiscal years.
I apologize, those dots are, those are clinics.
Correct.
All those dots.
Correct.
They're clinics or hospitals, right?
No, they're, they're actually veterans.
It's where they're going. Yeah, the color is where they're going.
The color is where the, they're home pickups, and that's where they're going.
Correct. Yeah, so the green dots are going to Baltimore.
Oh, I apologize, okay.
And all these are home pickups, even though the large green dots are...
The large green dot in the middle of Westminster is the Senior Center.
Okay.
So it's all of the pickups, but all the ones that are not the one in the Senior Center and the one in Eldersburg are home pickups.
From this, it doesn't look like there are any in Eldersburg.
Yeah, where's Eldersburg?
Because it's...
Right, there's no dot.
Yeah, I mean, we might, we might not have, we may have only picked up one that month at Shoppers, yeah.
We don't have a lot of pickups at that.
Got it.
It is very low.
Got it. This is a snapshot from July only.
Correct.
Got it.
Yes.
So, yeah, there's probably just no pickup.
Yeah, we, I think we have one or two gentlemen that utilize the Shoppers location, and they don't go on a regular basis.
Right, okay.
And then our graphs, just, you know, to show you the last three years, I gave you through January for fiscal year nineteen, just because we have it. Everything essentially is increasing, cost, home pickups, number, our number of veterans a month are kind of, are kind of close, our average, but our number of trips is increasing.
So you see in the last page, you have the number of veterans and the number of trips, so while some of our veterans' numbers may be on the lower side, we have a lot of riders now that are riding five days a week, because of their treatments or whatever, you know, services that they, that they need at this time. So as you'll see in FY nineteen, our average number of trips is running, you know, closer, you know, eighty-eight at the time, thank you, and you'll see in FY eighteen, you know, in seventeen, we want to give that comparison of the average number of trips, just to show that that increment, it continues to go up. This is why the funding of this program is, has also gone up, some of the funding needs and requests.
So, Crystal, or either one of you, go back to the basics for me again, please, and I apologize if I stepped out for a minute. When one of these folks need a ride to wherever, they call you guys, and you attempt to try to get them on the schedule where you can, correct?
Correct, yes, once they've registered and they need to schedule a ride, they just call, and we, attempt is not quite the right word, we always give them a ride, we've never denied anyone since we started the program.
So, how often is it that you get one to call that wants to go to, say, Martinsburg? And then the next day, you get another one to call, here's where the word attempt comes in. Do you attempt to try to get them on the same day, or is that, that's sort of a function of the VA, isn't it? You don't have anything to do with that?
We have nothing to do with that. So, they're lucky enough to get an appointment at the veterans' hospital, so we make sure that we get them there, so there have been times, and not recently, but there have been times that we've sent three vans to three different locations, sometimes four to four different locations.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm getting with the, with my question. So you guys sometimes are challenged by that, because you've got them going like this.
Yes.
And to add to what Crystal was saying, is a lot of the appointments, and you'll have, you can speak to this, the appointments are made typically multiple weeks, if not months ahead of time. So we're looking at that schedule, so as that day starts approaching, at that point, they've scheduled this, to add on to the fact that we don't have the control over...
Which begs the other question, how much in advance do they call you for a ride?
Not months in advance. They're pretty good about calling us about two or three days ahead of time.
Okay.
That's about as much notice as we get. So, but on the flip side of that, the VA also cancels their appointments, sometimes same day, so we'll have a driver in already, ready to go, and then we don't send them, because they don't have control over that end of it either. They just get a phone call saying, we're not gonna see you today. So a lot of things, and I think that's probably why they wait so long to make the appointment, because those things change so often, so that's, that's one of the variables.
Is there a...
Yeah, I just, I wanted to get some of those facts out, because that's what's really behind the scenes here happening. We've got a lot of people going this way, when, I wish there was a way we could get them a little bit more focused.
Since they make their appointments months in advance sometimes, is there a way, or have we looked into saying, okay, on whatever, Tuesdays we go to Green Street, on Wednesdays we go to Frederick? So, if we tell them that, not right now, because I don't cut anybody off, but let's say, starting in three months, this is the way we're gonna do it. So when they make their appointments, if they're going to Baltimore, they're making their appointments on the designated date Wednesday or something of that sort, has there, have we looked into doing something like that?
That's the way it started. Yeah, we only had designated dates when we started at CATS, so we went only to Green Street on two days, and Martinsburg another, but, so I guess if you give them enough notice, it could potentially be, that could be up for discussion, I just, I guess it depends on really what direction that we're given, because right now, we accommodate everyone. So, someone calls on a Wednesday to go to Green Street, and it's Martinsburg Day, are we gonna deny that veteran to go get a treatment that they may need?
Have we contacted the hospitals to try to do this, or not, yet?
No, no, we have not contacted the hospitals for much of anything, they're not, for the little bit that we have, different instances, they've not been very helpful.
And about three years ago, I think Secretary Owens was here, and we were looking at maybe Access Carroll as a site, that, whatever happened with that...
I don't know much, but they were denied, whatever that site's called, I forget the name, they, but Access Carroll was denied.
denied, for whatever reasons. Although, now that I think about it, part of that was because we didn't have VASH, and we have VASH vouchers now.
Right.
So, we should probably re-explore that, um, with Access Carroll again.
I mean, two things, we just cut down the number of trips, keep them local, and I'm su, I know some of the veterans who have used the shuttle system and said, you know, it, it's a godsend to them, uh, for treatments, they need major treatments, and what it's done for them is unbelievable. Uh, and they're going to be needing the specialized services, but a lot of them, uh, could be handled, if we could do it in-house, to reduce that budget, and I think we could provide all the services without, um, you know, and also, we contact the hospitals, and can you, Carroll County residents, try to condense them into these days, uh, to make it easy for us, uh-
We have to be cautious with HIPAA laws and what we're asking, what we're trying, what information we're trying to gain in order to set a, a schedule. And it really does, it is dependent on, as you're seeing by the charts, the services needed at the time.
Yeah.
And any veteran may have a specialized service where there would be a couple of days today, they'll, they could be in Baltimore.
Yeah.
They may be telling their veteran tomorrow, you need, you know, the next day, third day, you need to be down at NIH, because you need to see this, this specialist, you know, the specialist.
Well, one that may happen, it doesn't mean that we can't look into trying to schedule the Green Street thing on a Wednesday. And, and, I mean, from my perspective, instead of telling the hospitals, let the veterans know that ninety days out, we're going to try to do it this way. Now, if it comes up that someone's, okay, well, I have to go there, then you have to go there. I'm not saying deny any by anything, but if we can make it more efficient on our end, and you just do it, you know, say, okay, this is when we're going to go, here, here, here. Now, if something goes outside that parameter, then it goes outside of parameter, and we still provide service.
I believe we're going to, yeah.
I, I think that's what happened. I, I think we were doing that, and then we were receiving special requests outside those days.
Right, but it depends on, on how you, I guess, present it. These are the days we're actually going here, and for an exception, we'll go there a different day. Not that, okay, you can make your appointment on Tuesday, no, no, it's not like that. If it's an appointment and it's regularly scheduled, schedule three months in advance, or however long it is, let's schedule on a Wednesday. Now, if something comes up and you can't make it on, then that's an exception, but it's not, when we started here, then, okay, we'll do anything.
The veterans join this-
The way it's pointed, just put out.
The veterans join the scheduling, correct?
Of their appointments.
Of their appointments.
Their appointments, they're doing the scheduling for their appointment.
Yes, but, but like, right now, though, just as an example of, of the locations, because in theory, that does, I mean, from treatment, five days a week.
Right.
Um, and that can change at any time, so if we do limit it, and we say, okay, well, we're only going to go to Green Street, well, we'd have to at this point go five days, because they have a, a treatment program that they're in. Um, and if we limit the others, and then they too have to then move up to a different program, and they're five days a week, then we're just, we're back to what we're doing right now, so.
Can we print a yearly schedule ahead of time, that we recommend Martinsburg on these days, uh, Baltimore on these days? When they schedule, that they try to schedule them into those?
I mean, yeah, in, in theory, it sounds absolutely what we would love to be able to do, but it's the specialist, it's the, it's a lot of variables that unfortunately, even the veteran probably doesn't have any control over, so.
But if you put out, like, some, some information, saying, in an effort to keep this free to the veterans, if you could schedule your appointments in these locations on these days, it would really help the county out, something, I mean, not, not those attack words, but something really, really close in. So, if they like that, I think the veterans would cooperate and try to make their appointments on those days. And if they can't, then they can't.
But aren't those variables how we're here now, though? I mean, because, so, and, just, I've been doing this since we started it, so, and some of the frustration on our end on how to manage these situations is that we don't have, um, a concrete yes or no answer. So, we can say right now, listen, this is the annual calendar for 2019, try to schedule your appointments, but we also know we're not going to deny veterans, which is great, so I'm not, I'm not advocating for denying them, but then we're in the same boat, so we're still going to have that unknown. Are we going to have four buses today, or two, or one, or three? So, in my, in my opinion, I think it's best to say, listen, we go to Martinsburg, we go to Baltimore religiously, let's set up, let's budget for those two drivers, those two routes that go every day. If we don't have anyone that goes, great, we save that day's budget, but in, in my opinion, and the cost of it is really, where, where we can start fixing that is on the other end of it, is where we're picking up all these people at home, which I know is needed, but I think we need to come up with a better way to get them, rather than driving all over the county, because we already know we're going to Martinsburg and Baltimore, so that variable is no.
That's actually my next point.
Okay.
Point number two.
I'm sorry.
No, I was actually going to say, is there a way to work with the transit system for the, for the on-demand, and then the on-demand takes them to our hubs, rather than our veteran shuttle going through all those places? So, the on-demand picks you up at your house, brings you to the hub, and then, then they, it's like, the hub's right over here somewhere.
Right.
Right here, okay, takes you to the hub, and then the bus from, or the vans from there, our shuttle vans from there, take you down to those places. That way, we don't have to pick up around the county, because on-demand already goes to all those places when they're called.
That is my second point, Commissioner Frazier, so I'm glad that you brought-
Eye to eye on this, it's good.
Um, so-
Yours must be a good point, then.
In my, well, and yours as well. Um, I think I'm keeping things around here, okay. So, my, my suggestion, I mean, I, I think that we need to handle it on that end of things. So, just, and this, I just did some rough math here in my, you know, while we're talking, so it's probably all wrong, but we're going to go with it. Um, the average cost is four dollars. Some of the passengers who could potentially get to the hub, um, and I think we need to expand what our hubs are. We have a lot of folks in North Carroll. The North Carroll Senior Center being a, a stop is not, it would, would be very beneficial for the veterans.
Four dollars one way or two.
It would be four dollars one way, they live within that zone, but-
So, eight dollars round trip.
It would be eight dollars round trip. Um, or, some of them could potentially live within the shuttle, so it would only be a dollar for them, because they're, um-
Just off the path.
Right, they're just off the path. Or, they would be able to get close enough that they could walk to the end of their street and get on the shuttle, so that could save them money also. Um, there's a lot of ifs, but, so that, that's one scenario. If they get reimbursed for transportation, they could use that money to maybe supplement their eight dollars, and of course, that would only be for those who would require home pickup. And while I understand income is low, eight dollars is a pretty nominal fee to get to Baltimore, Frederick, or Martinsburg, where you're going. So, if they could, if they could offset that with getting reimbursed for their transportation, that could certainly be, um, a, an idea for them as well. Right now, with having, we have an average of fifteen passengers that utilize home pickup, by my calculations, a month, um, we have an average of about sixty-five trips a month for home pickup. If we were to charge them, our fare box collection would be about fifty-five hundred dollars a year, which doesn't sound like a lot. Um, but that fare box collection, and not having our veterans on the road, right now, at our current hourly rate, would save twelve thousand dollars a year, just in shaving off one hour before and one hour in the end of running around to pick up all these folks at home. Um, so, I mean, we're looking at about almost twenty thousand dollars as this increases a year, and that's not including fuel maintenance, um, and those really early and late pickups, so that could certainly save a little bit of money as well.
Would it cost money to make, uh, North Carroll Senior Center a hub in any way? Would that offset that potential saving?
Y, no, not really. Um, for right now, we pick up at eight o'clock at eight-thirty, and we're, our, our veteran drivers are starting at about six forty-five in the morning. So, if we were to pick them up at, uh, if we were to pick them up at seven-thirty, they would start a little bit later, and it would still shape off that time for running around for home pickups in the morning. So, that would, that, that is including North Carroll Senior Center being a pickup spot.
Gina, you're, you're vetting these folks before they call CTS for their ride, right? So, kind of, what are you saying, what are your thoughts?
Um, a, a lot of it, a lot of the individuals, they don't have transportation, or they don't drive, um, they don't have a vehicle, again, or don't drive, and it's, it's typically due to a disability. Um, we have multiple veterans who are legally blind, um, who utilize the shuttle. Um, you know, again, every once in a while, it's, it's, well, a lot of them are, are older veterans as well. Um, and every once in a while, again, there's just somebody that due to, like, a surgery or what have you, that they, they can't, you know, or some medical condition that has, has come up, that they can't drive. So, we haven't had, um, I brought, um, somewhere, unless I left it in my office, which I probably did, unfortunately, but I did take a look at the number of veterans, um, who have been, um, asking for home pickup, and, and recently, there have not been that many in the registrations for this fiscal year. Um, we've only had a handful, I think, that have asked for home pickup.
So, what would the roadblock be, they're using the CTS on-demand service to pick them up and take them to a hub? Is there a roadblock to that, or?
Just the fare, yeah, just the fare collection.
Right. Would the commissioners want that to be reimbursed through some voucher program? Would you, what, would that be a pass, a cost that was, be passed on to the, to the veteran? Um, and these are, it's, where do you want that expense to be? I mean, the end, I think as you, it would still, it would be cheaper at the end of the day, from what come, and we have a large overmatch for their regular service program. So, there would still be net savings at the end of the year, um, if we were to voucher it, uh, but that's a decision that have, would have to be made by the board.
Are we the, are we the only jurisdiction that's providing this transportation?
Yes.
Still?
Yes.
I don't understand why we can't reach out to the state and get involved in some sort of disbursement, uh, or, or some sort of program. It, it, have, have we tried that? Have we told anybody besides you guys, a couple of you guys, that, have you, have you told somebody in the state that we're doing this, and it would be nice to get some sort of, of buy-in from the state to, to assist with this? Or don't they even know that we're doing it? I mean, I heard you mention Secretary Kramer, uh-
Oh, I understand, yeah.
But, do they even know what we're doing here?
Well, Secretary Owens certainly does. When, um, the governor had his Carroll Day, Annapolis and Carroll Day several years ago-
Right.
-um, we all met with Secretary Kramer, um, and, and showed him a shuttle bus, and, um, and talked to him about the program, and he was very thrilled and hoped that other counties would, would take up the charge and do the same kind of thing.
Right.
I didn't hear any, any money falling.
Blah, 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 blah.
We were asked.
And so, so that's my, so maybe that's where I'm going here. Why, it, it certainly wouldn't hurt to ask, uh, by whoever, to say, look, we're doing this, what are the possibilities? I mean, I heard, I hear you talk about reimbursement programs that are available, but we, has anyone just merely just said, hey?
We did ask about that, and that has to go right to the veteran. It wouldn't reimburse us at that time, that was three years ago when this-
And that's fine, but it would offset the cost of getting them on what you guys are talking about.
The other part of this, at Mako, about a year and a half ago, they had a program from another county, and they did a presentation, what they're doing for veterans. It was about a third of what, where we are in this whole thing.
Right.
And they were getting, giving a presentation to the state, and we're doing, uh, three times what they're doing in there. So, yes, we, we do not have the word out, uh, to the right people here, and, yes, we need to ask.
Seems to me there should be a couple more seats here this morning. Right?
You mean state people?
Yeah.
And our understanding is Howard County is looking into this right now, just a similar program, but they're just in the infancy stage of discussion.
Can our vans route through Howard County and pick up at a reimbursement cost?
If we have a-
If we had the capacity, then we'd do it.
Yeah, that'd be, yeah.
That would be a scheduling nightmare, too.
Yeah. I saw a look on your face on that one.
If you want to purchase software that would cover Howard and Baltimore County, I'm all for it, so, it's fine if you have it.
How, which leads to the question, how much time do you spend on scheduling just for the veterans' shuttle?
Um, I would like to tell you it's a lot, but it, they're, they're very simple, so I-
Okay.
Less, less than two hours in a week.
Okay.
We have it down to a science, so they call, we schedule it.
Which is why you spend less than two hours, because you've got it down to a science. Okay.
The veterans said if they can use the CTS service to get picked up and then take it to a hub, it's four dollars. What is the discount book, that, that we set at Senior Citizen Centers, if we could get down to the veterans, that would cut it in half, wouldn't it?
It would cut them in half, so if they could get that, they would pay five dollars for a book of ten, if they did that.
Right.
Um, some of the veterans, though, and I began looking at this when Stacy and I were talking about this before, um, a lot of them, I can get them on a shuttle, so their trailblazer cost would be one dollar each way. Now, the only issue with that would be the end, the end trip, so if they're, all of their appointments run over, and they're getting back too late to catch that shuttle, obviously, our veterans' shuttle would take them home, so there would be that, that running around, but that would be on a case-by-case basis.
Right, but that would happen, but it, not, it's not an all-the-time kind of thing.
Right. But we're guaranteed to shave at least an hour off in the morning and get those folks-
And if we got the information out and gave them a month or two notice, this is what we're trying to hit now, and gave them the option to buy the discount booklets, I mean, I think it's a good first step.
Well, and I don't know how many the, um, Bureau of Aging has to give out, so I don't know if maybe there's a separate pool that we should have just for those veterans, and they're not trying, they're not taking from the-
Put a few more.
-the seniors that are trying to get them already, but if we, if we had our own-
Right, I don't want to take away from the seniors that are getting them, because I've heard that they're going to make it up to begin with.
The first of the month is a rough time, yes.
But, we can make extra available to the veterans.
So, at this point, we have been running a pilot since November with our, our discount and donated ticket booklets, to see if we didn't stop the sales per person, so if an individual comes in and gets their allocation of booklets per month, what if we continued to sell and didn't put a cap on it? What would that look like? And we have not seen a significant increase in those sales. So, we are right now serving everyone through those discount and donated, um, ticket books, allowing everyone to purchase that comes to our door. That being said, adding the veterans in, I was just thinking, are we tracking which individuals that we're selling, um, the discount and donated booklets to by veteran? And I'm not sure we've been doing that. Because some veterans would qualify, most veterans would qualify now.
I think they have, I think it's all would.
So, then, we may have some, and we can go back, um, and, because we have the, the individual names, and we can pull that data, and see how many are currently accessing that now.
What about charging the companion? Can't, right now, the, the veteran's taking a, a companion on the shuttle, and they're both riding for free?
Correct.
So, do we want to consider maybe charging the companion for their ride? I don't-
If, if that happens, if it's, if it's a, if it's an attendant, you know, that's going with it, that's not a family member, then that cost is going to go back to the veteran, just throwing that out, um, because they would have to pay for that then, I'm sure. I don't know, how many, how many caregivers are really going?
Not a lot. I wa, I looked over that, and of all of the veterans that we have registered, only six religiously take someone with them, and of those six, only two go on a regular basis. But, and they're required, they really need, they, they either, they are legally blind and can't see, or they're in, you know, a chair, and they're not physically able to get there. So if they don't go, then our driver's pushing them or walking them, which we kind of do already now, but...
So assists the driver as much as anything to have the assistance rate?
Yeah, because our drivers are currently their care assistants if they don't bring one, just because they don't always know where they're going anymore. Yeah.
So we're servicing around 30-some veterans a year to this program? What's the total number of vets?
Month, probably. Is that month?
A month.
What's our total amount of veterans we're helping?
The total number registered is 359 to date.
I mean, you've come up with some good ideas, Crystal, I think, to help save costs, but honest to God, I continue to say, I think it's time for us to stand up and start bragging about this. And perhaps that'll lead to some assistance. So, I mean, one of our, two of our colleagues are now veterans, so what better? It seems like perfect storm to me.
Is the veterans' program just county, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to this, but is it just county-funded, or is this a nonprofit? Is this something that could be a nonprofit that people could donate to? Because I feel like everyone likes to donate.
So as Rob Burke loves to say, county governments, local governments, the original nonprofit.
That is true.
Yes, people can donate to the program if they wanted to.
I mean, do we know that? Maybe we should have some veteran fundraisers, if not for anything but just the shuttle, we could certainly do that. So maybe there are some other, I mean, obviously, I think going, I think going to the state's a fine idea, but in the interest of the stakeholders.
And keep in mind, this has to be sustainable.
Right.
I mean, fundraising's fine, but that's a one-time, a one-shot, and fundraising's not a sustainable way to support an entity.
It's not. But it would help. It could help.
It would help, yes.
We could have veterans, like maybe an annual veterans' shuttle event or something of that nature, just to kind of help.
I mean, there's a lot of those things that go on, you know? So how much more can we take? I often hear our philanthropy community say, "Man, now we're going to this next week. Now we're going to this next month. Now we're going to this." So, you know, you can, you can max them out, too. What's the new veterans' group? What's the acronym?
VIP?
Yeah, is that what it is? Yeah.
Veterans Independence Project.
Right. Has there been any discussion from that group on this issue? Or is it just a, or are we just at a place where it's just a given that we provide transportation to veterans?
That's where it's been up till now. We've been able to support it, put it in, and it has worked. Now, all of a sudden, it's, veterans are getting older, many of them.
Needs a little help.
More services. It's getting expensive for us.
Right.
And I agree with you 100%. We need to let people know in the state. Locally, I think we do a pretty good job, but once we get out of Carroll County, people don't know about us a whole lot, what we're doing there. And I've heard bits and pieces. They really don't know what we do. And I think we need to seek state assistance, funding for veterans' shuttle, let them know what we're doing. I think we have to pursue the in-county service that we dropped a couple of years ago, or got denied at that point. At that point. And we have to look, what you said, on the defray expenses here somehow to bring it down, maybe using the on-demand to a hub or for some of these people. But some of these guys are in pretty bad shape, and women. They are getting to the point that, you know, sight, hearing, everything's going on them, and they need some assistance. And those guys really need to be helped here. And, you know, I go back to this, this is not a freebie. They've earned these benefits. And, you know, we have to do what we can to help the veterans, the guys who keep us here and are able to do what we do, so...
I agree wholeheartedly on that. Isn't there, didn't someone start a local veterans' shuttle?
Yeah.
It's the Friends of the Disabled American Veterans.
Okay. So, you know, perhaps, I mean, I don't want to get one tugging at the other, but there's another possibility of getting them to where they need to get if they needed to get to the hub. You know, I don't know, okay, I don't know what they're doing or where they're taking them. I would assume local physician's appointments or of the like, but maybe there's a possibility to get those, that's, what's his name, right?
Bill Martin.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe we could get him hooked up to take them from home to wherever and...
We have discussed that with him.
Okay.
I think they've had some staffing challenges and a couple other bumps. So it's not, it's a possibility.
Okay.
And I think that because it's a volunteer-based model.
Right.
He's had some, some things that he's had to work through. And we all came together and we met when he was starting up, and we pulled in CTS and Stacy with, you know, from the county side, and really talked about exactly that in these home pickups at North Carroll in that area. And we feel he wants to be part of that, and they want to be part of that process and to help as they can, but it's not come to fruition at this point.
Okay.
So we are still exploring that as an option, but I think their startup is taking a little bit longer to, and they are up and running, but to get it, you know, the volume to increase.
Right.
And their drivers are all volunteer veterans, aren't they?
And their, and what their goal is, is to provide in-county transportation only that, so as not to compete with CTS and also to provide it to the non-VA sites that are here in the county.
Okay.
I'd like to re, Tom, so you can finish up.
That was it.
I'd like to reiterate what Commissioner Rothstein has mentioned about educating these veterans of potential reimbursement from the federal government. I don't know if there's a system we could have in place to get them data and information, because if they have a chance to be reimbursed, they should be. And also, down the line, if there's a chance we can tap into that, to get reimbursed at this level with those funds, I'd like to pursue that. At least we get some sort of federal subsidy through that avenue. But that would have to be based upon what type of reimbursement they're getting, and I don't know what that is. I don't know what type of formula is used, what's the amount. But if we could some way tap into that revenue stream from the federal government assistance and our transportation to bring it into this program, that would be helpful.
Gina, do we cross-reference the folks who come in for, to see the vet counselors with these people, the vet shuttle users? So that if they're already seeing the vet counselors, then they're talking about their benefits, what they can get, and so they would, they would know whether they were eligible, they could work on them about their eligibility for reimbursement for their shuttle service.
No, they would.
The VSOs don't go into that detail with veterans. VSO is...
Our veteran services offices. Ours would, and especially, I explain to them that that needs to be part of the process, they would certainly do that. I ask them to do a lot of things, but that regular VSOs may not typically do, which of course makes our services, you know, good. But if, that can be part of the process, I'm sorry.
Is it a simple form?
Yes, I have it. Right, here in my pile somewhere.
I know government form can't be simple.
It's actually only one page.
Wow.
How does it look to me?
But I can ask, I mean, I am pretty sure Jim Hellman is very familiar with this process, so I'll talk to him about this today and ask him how easy it is, how much it is. I've kind of heard, like, there was a veteran who was transporting himself for treatment five days a week, and extended like 25 bucks a week might have been his reimbursement, that's what's coming to mind, but, you know, at least it would be something. I think the other question I would have is that if the county's paying the service, or providing the service at no charge, would they be eligible for the reimbursement? Because I don't know what that looks like.
I think they said no at one time, but I don't know the reason. I can't remember the reason on that, but it has to go through the individual veteran the way it's set up. But with some help on the Mad Dog Shuttle, here's your form, you know, submit this, and but it has to go through the veteran, how you tie in there, I don't...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're all going to need a little bit of education on that reimbursement program, how we could tap into it if possible.
Well, one of the veterans from the VAC told me that basically after the end of their appointment, there's either a paper form or a computer that they actually have to check out, and they can actually state that they were either transported by themselves, by a family member, or an outside transportation. He was telling me that basically when he goes to Martinsburg, he gets about between $50 to $60 per trip, and it's because he is service-connected. And of course, service-connected means that in his service, he was hurt, and the injury sustained was throughout, through his service. So he actually gets a check. He says that most vets do not know that, because he, you know, when he was going for his particular injury, that's when they told him that you can get this money. So one, it would be to let the vets know, to kind of ask some type of questions that hopefully aren't going to encroach on HIPAA. I'm an HR person by nature for the past 20 years, so, you know, it'd have to be very, you know, either with other entities that we can kind of ask those questions and have them to understand what can and cannot happen. But he did state that lots of people do not realize that that money is there. One of the concerns that I know that when we spoke with the vet was, what if the vets are actually using this money for other things? Food, utilities, things of that nature? So we want to be very cognizant of what we may ask from them, seeing as though that if they are already getting this money, this may be something that they use the money for. So that's another option as well. But it is out there, and they have several means on getting it, but it literally is a check to the actual vet. So we just have to get them to understand if it's service-connected. He also stated that it may be a, another way that if the vets are, do not have a lot of money, that they could, it's a means test as well, to state, you know, if they financially may need this money for transportation, that they would be able to get that money as well. So it's just something that we would have to work with veteran services to really figure out what we can say, how we can say, what's necessary, and to kind of help the vet along as well.
See, I think that's where we need to go. I really do. And we're still providing the service. It's merely creating a pass-through, that's all. It's all that we're doing. We're not taking away anything necessarily, we're tapping into a resource that we need. So, you know, perhaps that's the direction we have to go to. So I would suggest we do that, and I would also suggest that whoever looking at the upper management here, somebody needs to have a Veterans Day or something here in the county. Enough's enough. They need to know what we're doing here. And it's not just in passing when you see somebody at an event. They need to come up here and spend four hours and go out to talk to Crystal and, you know, see what we're, see what we're doing, whatever. Somebody needs to have that sort of, whatever, a day, or it doesn't even have to be a day. I mean, they could do it in four hours. And I think you might get some dividends as a result of just merely showing people what in the world we're doing here.
We ought to have the Mad Dog Shuttle pick them up.
Do that, too. I mean, you know, the possibilities are endless. I mean, we've done some amazing things here. And to just be sitting on our, on our, on our hands and saying, "Okay, well, okay, now we need a little help, because we're, you know, we had to ask for some extra revenue," come on. Somebody needs to know what we're doing. So, somebody needs to work on that.
Well, two years ago, there was a veterans' conference. That was, you described it, that was in the...
So we had a veterans' forum about two years ago where we did just that. We showcased our veteran services. We were up at the community college, and it was basically showcasing the, all county services, whether it's nonprofit or county government, of services provided veterans. And we had a pinning ceremony for Vietnam vets. So we, at that time, that was just, it was just a staff run. It was actually Commissioner Howard who recommended we do that, and we did it, so it was really staff-run. And we had said maybe we would do that every other year, so as to not saturate what's going on. So actually, in FY '20, we're due to have a forum, and we're actually coming before the board soon with the Veteran Advisory Council, because we want the Veterans Advisory Council to get direction from you all, what they should be working on. And we thought that may be a good project for the VAC to work on in concert with the staff for the FY '20 forum. And we could do just that.
Actually, some of the things we're talking about today may be direction to the Advisory Council to, especially the promotion into this, as far as direction and as far as in-county service, I think that would be one that, working with them, would be really ones we need to ask them to do. Am I wrong?
What part of '20 are you looking at doing this? Early, middle, and where?
Whatever we decide. It could be around Veterans Day. Last, we did it in the fall last year, so...
January, I think it was.
January, was it that late? Okay. We could do it really any, you know, anytime.
Yeah.
The other piece, as far as involving the state, we, two years ago, we also did our expo with the veterans, celebrating veterans' theme, and we did invite state officials into that as well. And Secretary Kramer, the Maryland Department of Aging Secretary, sent her deputy director to that event, where we showcased all the veteran services, including the shuttle at that expo as well. But I think providing a more detailed presentation at Mako, where we talked about even presenting at our National Area Agency on Aging Conference, where state officials attend as well, might even be a broader and better forum to do that.
I just don't want to get to the point where, you know, the Howard Counties of the world start to do this, and then, you know, we sit back and say, "Yeah, well, we've been doing that for, you know, two years." But yet, they get the accolades. We should be getting the accolades.
It's a well-kept secret. I think every American Legion, BFW knows exactly what is going on, Veterans Council does. But when you get out to the general population, I'm not sure they're very aware, and when you get outside the county, bits and pieces, but they really don't know what we're doing. This is a major promotion-type program, what you need to get out to and let people know in Annapolis, too. They know about it, but they really don't have a feel for where we are.
Speaking of that, it's kind of a two-part thing, but I agree that a lot of people don't know about it. So if we are going to push for that to increase the volume, there are many, many, many things we can do, so that we can get more veterans on board. But we don't, right now, we have a flyer, like the most basic flyer, that explains what we do. And some of that is because this has grown much faster than I think anyone really anticipated. And as, from a vendor standpoint, part of the, part of the concern financially, obviously, is a big portion of that, but we don't really have a structure on what this program is. And I think, and we talked about that at the Veterans Advisory Council a month before I brought it up. And so, you know, we're just, provide veterans transit, which we, which we are doing, but we don't really have a structure. We don't have, you know, and we need that guidance from you. What are our hours? When do we, I mean, I will be the first to tell you, I just make the rules up as I go to what I, what I see fit, you know, to, as long as we can get our drivers in and out in a reasonable amount of time. But that would also really help with budget and what we're looking to fund. But we don't really have set hours. We don't have, is there a cutoff? I don't know. I was always told we can't deny, nor would I want to, but that we can't deny anyone, so we make everything happen all the time. Is there, you know, are there, we just don't really have any, we don't have a structure, we don't have a program. We have, we run a shuttle for veterans, and that is literally the only information we have. So I think to hand someone something and say, "We offer this service, these are the hours, these are the locations," that kind of structure would not only help us as a vendor, but the people utilizing the service.
Yeah, I think that's part of the growing pains, Crystal, that occurred. There's really no, you know, we started this and it all sounded good, and it was great, but with that has to come some parameters, and we sort of let that go.
Right.
With, with the, you know, you just make it work. We're good, just, you know?
I mean, I can keep making it work, but your expenses are...
And then come back to us and get another 40 grand, which is where we're in, you know, that's why we're here.
Right.
So something's got to give.
Well, I think a few things. One, you know, I guess to quote Reagan, "It's amazing what you can get done when nobody cares about who takes the credit." So I'm not worried about accolades of Howard County or anybody else. We're doing amazing things, and...
Well, I only said that...
We are giving very valuable service to our veterans. We're continuing to do that. That event at Carroll Community College was standing room only, and we had federal and state folks there as well, recognizing veterans. The pinning ceremony, it was awesome. We're doing it continuously. Shared with Secretary Owings and along with the delegation and everyone else, the programs that we're doing. It's not a secret, you know? They know now. The challenge is getting them to listen more and look at applying resources, where their time, people, and money towards these programs. Crystal, I agree 100%. We are in a, a form of what in the military we call mission creep, and that is basically when you start something, but you don't have an end state or a vision, and you just continue to grow. And we don't need this to be another Somalia, where we just continue to grow, grow, grow without understanding what the exit strategy is, or the strategy to, you know, like Commissioner Wentz said, parameters around the program. I think, I think it is a partnership of all of us around the table to come up with those very specific objectives and goals, and we can do that. What is the problem we're trying to solve? The problem we're trying to solve is to leverage, is to, you know, allow for our veterans in our community that don't have the means to get the care necessary. And that is, you know, at the VA. Now, VA is also changing their processes and allowing for veterans to go to other locations outside the VA. Are we prepared to service those veterans that are now going to private physicians that may be closer to get that service? Are we, are we looking to service the VA community, the VA centers and hospitals? Or are we there to service our veterans? And we're there to service our veterans. I mean, it's, I understand that, and it means to be so rhetorical about it, but in doing that, we're going to grow into other places that we're going to have to service, as opposed to Martinsburg and Green Street. Are we prepared to do that? I think if we, if we define that problem, the veterans that do not have the luxury or the means, or whatever we want to say, that meet the criteria that you shared, providing them appropriate service to get the best care possible. This is a method to doing that, and I don't think it's a whole, I don't think it's the full method. I do believe we need to talk to the state and the region more, and I do believe that Howard County is stepping up finally in looking at how to service their veterans, and they And they have a very large veteran community as well. How we can possibly partner with them, if that's feasible, we should look at. I don't know if that's the right answer or not. I don't know logistics-wise how difficult it would be to look at a regional approach, but it's worth looking at. My biggest concern is that we started in 2012, like you shared, with 25,000. And now you're going to be looking at 230,000. And it's only seven years. And we're growing these numbers and that 40,000 that you asked for the other day, which, again, I appreciate everything we're doing to take care of our veterans. But I think you're right. I think we're in a mission creep and we're continuing to bleed us in dollars, but not understanding the actual reason why we're doing it. So we've got to kind of say, stop, you know? You know, where's that $230,000 projected to go? Is it meeting, is it helping to fix the problem that we're trying to solve? And when, I don't want to say enough is enough, but where are other resources? You know, I look at three Rs. It's risks, risk management, resource management, and return on investment. And those three things have to be, have to be looked at. Not one or the other, but all three. The risk associated, resources that we're willing to apply, and then what is the return on investment for quality of life for our veterans? And I'm just concerned that we're kind of, we're spinning, you know? And, because you've shared this often and I agree with you. Let's define the vision and the goals and then come up with the objectives and then resource those objectives. That's it. And I mean, it's a straight, and then we stop. I mean, we cannot save the world, but let's save a little piece of the corner of the world right now. And that's our identified veterans, the services, you know, for their quality of life with the resource we have. And we can do that. And if the cost comes out to $230,000, then we make that decision, yes or no, to fund that $230,000. But it's, but the biggest concern, if we don't define ourselves, we'll keep asking for another 40,000, 25,000. And that will drive Mr. Zaleski crazy, along with all of us, because it's not disposable money. And we've got to get it from somewhere. So we've got to, we've got to get to a point now, stop and define it and then resource it. I apologize being so parochial about it, but, you know, it's not about the state not knowing. The state knows. Our delegation knows. I'm confident they do.
Then where are they?
I don't know.
They know it.
But they know.
And I've seen this happen again and I'm going to, I'm going to argue with you a little bit about the accolade. I only use that in a sense of, I've seen it over the last four years. Things that have happened that we've done here, that have happened across the state, and then they all of a sudden get funding for it. But yet we've been doing it for two years. So I'm not saying that we should get out there and crow about how fantastic we are. I'm using accolades by saying, somebody needs to know. And I hear you say that our delegation knows and our state knows. Well, if they know, then where are they?
What about a first release?
I apologize. I don't know where they are. I don't. But I am confident.
Maybe they need to know again.
I am confident that they have been made aware of this multiple times. I am not confident that they are prepared to put resources against their own time and people and money. So you're right. Let's give them this program with defined parameters, like you said, and say, this is what we are doing and this is where, in order for us to sustain the operations, where we would want your assistance. And physically give a fact sheet or something to the delegation, to Secretary Owens and everybody else. I mean, we were, we have the luxury of being Carroll County, we have the luxury of being aggressive, of being down in Mako and being willing to step up. I think what we need to do is, is do that for these type of services. You know, but it starts back to us and that's defining, like, you know, Chris was asking. And put it in paper, get a vision statement done. Because I can't, I can make one up. I think it's close to being right, but I want it to be able to be obtainable. A vision statement, end state, goals and objectives, this is how we're resourcing it. And then put it on paper and move forward and that's it.
We need a vision statement, business plan put down.
It's as simple as that.
And I do agree with you, people know about our program. They just don't know details. They know a lot, but I don't, now, certain people at the state do, yes.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of people out there, and I'm talking about the delegate from, or anybody from Howard County or Montgomery County. They may have a, catch an idea of what we do, but they really don't know what we do. And that's, I think you're right, that's part of our responsibility to.
I'm also really concerned about internally within the county. There's still so many veterans that just don't know the services that are available to them, especially, like you mentioned, the kiosk with the transportation. I'm aware of that because I check out from the VA and it's in there. But again, I'm driving there and coming back. So it's, it's knowing and understanding the services and it's education, you know, like Commissioner Boucher shared earlier. It's educating our veteran force, it's educating the folks around us. I, I've asked, you know, through the Veterans Advisory Council, that we get the Carroll County Times more engaged. And they started to come to the meetings, but then they left, you know? They came like two, three times, I'm like, hey, this is good. But then they were gone. And there should be a veterans' corner in the paper, once a week or once every two weeks. Here are the services available. You know, I, why not, as opposed to some of the other things that are in the paper? You know, and, because we are, we're doing amazing things. I am so proud of all of you, the work you're doing, taking care of our veterans. No county is doing what we're doing. And, you know, like, you know, last thing Commissioner Wentz said, we should be beating the drum very loudly, continue to see this.
So, well, I think that's, Steph 100% agrees with you and that's why we're here, because we want to get that program direction. What does, what do policymakers at the county want this program to be? Do they want it to be more scheduled, you know, we only go to certain streets, certain sites, certain days? We have to use demand response, we don't pick them up? I mean, who do we, or, you know? So they're looking for that direction.
But I don't think that can be defined as quickly. I think it's, again, define the problem, come up with a vision, and then saying, okay, in order to accomplish that, within the resources that we have available to us, the amount of buses, the amount of money, the amount of drivers, the amount of services, these are things that we're capable of doing. If you want us to do more, like door-to-door, whatever it is, this is the amount of resources it would take in order to do that, the money, time, and people. But right now, we know what the budget is. We know what your budget is for, you know what you're proposing. With that proposal, you're going to say, these are the services that are being provided. And then determine whether we should be curtailing it or doing more. You know, that's kind of where we're at. But it comes to find the problem first, so.
Is there anything? I'm sorry.
I mean, I, be my background in athletics, world champion. I always thought I didn't have the conversation. But is there anything we can do today? Anything we can do today to move this forward? I mean, we can look at everything that was mentioned and it's all, it's all good and we should be looking at defining our parameters and what we're going to do with this, but what can we do today? Because one thing I, I think that we should be looking at right now is instead of sending the shuttles to all these places, have the CTS go there. Because when they call in, they call in to you anyway. So you can say, okay, we're going to send out the on-demand service to your house for this and then bring you to the hub. I mean, can we start that now? Is there any reason why we can't start that now? Would you guys be agreement that that would be the first step to get it done today, to make a step toward that?
The only challenge is the money.
Correct.
Well, that and it has to be across the board. I mean, we'd have to, this is why we need kind of the structure first, because to then say, okay, well, then if you need this, here's what you do. Because we kind of, we have to do it for everyone across the board, not just this person or that person. And that.
Right, but, hey, the money, we're not charging them for the shuttle pickups right now through the Mad Dog Shuttle. So as of right now, maybe we wouldn't charge them for on-demand either.
So we would just build that back instead of an hourly rate?
Yeah, but that would actually be cheaper than the shuttle. So that's a step right there. So we don't have to worry about charging them right now. Now, if we look at that later and say, okay, you know what, we will give you the booklets and that way it's $2 a trip or whatever it is. That's nominal fee. Yes. Yeah, well, we can do that, but we don't have to do that today. Today, we can say, we want to send CTS out with on-demand buses because that's going to cut our costs.
Yes.
They're still getting the service that they need, it's just a different way to provide that service. And the CTS will take them to either the senior citizen, senior center up in.
Yeah, the senior.
Whatever. To one of those three places. And then from there, the shuttle will take them to where they're going to go. That is a cut in, not in services, but a cut in our, in our costs. So we could do that right now, right?
And come back with a quarterly report saying this is what.
Yes. Now, and then there would be some people that would not utilize demand response because logistically it doesn't make sense. So there would be people who we would still pick up from their home, just on the regular veteran shuttle, because it would cost more money to get them.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So just so, yeah, so that wouldn't apply to everyone. But so to answer your question, yes, we can do that now. No, it wouldn't apply to everyone. And yes, it would cut back what we're spending on our rate for veteran services.
So I think, I mean, I think that's a good first step. I don't know if you all agree with that, but if you did, then that's, start with that.
Are there other efficiencies we need to look at in the system?
Can I just ask one question, looking back at that option and moving to that model? Is that going to increase their time spent on the bus?
No.
Okay.
Well, no, because they would still be picked up from their home anyhow. So they would just be picked up by a different bus, so that our veteran shuttle's not starting earlier to gather seven people. They would have their own prospective buses take them to that one place. So they're still taking that trip.
Okay.
They may be picked up earlier. It may, send their trip time. Not really, because they are already being picked up earlier, the only thing. So right now, we have a gentleman that's in Hampstead, he gets picked up at 7:15 every day so that we can pick up all the other folks. He would still get picked up at 7:15 just by a different bus who's already on the schedule, not by the veteran services. So it would not impact their time on the bus at all.
So we're the, answer the question about the efficiency. The efficiency would come on into the demand response bus, because at that same time, they're picking up multiple other citizens in that area. So that we would, in many cases, there'd be multiple people on the man response bus where today there might be one or two. Now there may, that veteran may be the third on that route. So we're getting, that's where some efficiency comes in, is the fact that you already have a bus that's driving to those areas. There are other occasions that would maybe that's a separate trip.
As we put our vision together and our business plan on this, I think we do keep in mind efficiencies where we can change it as we're doing that. And that's a perfect time to implement.
Every bus that, right, and every bus that goes to either Green Street or to Fort Dietrich and Martinsburg, it depends on the number of riders for the day. Will depend if they're in a, if Roger and us will fill up a minivan or they're filling up one of our Pro Masters. So they, they're cognizant about the number of veteran, you know, the number of riders going, where they're going and what size vehicle that we're utilizing. But as we sit back and we continue to promote and we continue to increase the services and really get the word out there, we just don't want to get to the point where we're at a capacity, you know, we maximize the capacity. While we have some minivans that probably a couple of years from being replaced, we have to be thinking about in that business plan, are we replacing those minivans with Pro Masters or like-type vehicle or replacing still with the minivans? But we'll need to be, those are discussions, again, that we are going to discuss with capacity, if we're, if we're going to have a capacity max or not.
Commissioner Weaver, we also combine Martinsburg and Fort Dietrich together. I don't know if you said combined or not, so I apologize if I'm repeating, but we don't run two buses to those two locations unless it's a conference of veterans' appointments. So we do just hit Frederick on the way down. So we are not currently running an extra bus for those two. We just send ones. We are combining them.
So what are we going to get accomplished between now and the next meeting?
We're going to utilize the demand, we're going to look at the demand response. But right now, Roger and us, Crystal and Lisa, we're penciling the numbers real quick on paper. We'll get some of the efficiencies built, put down on paper into spreadsheets to show kind of snapshot, as you will, what that savings will be. Right now, we're finalizing our budget for upcoming. And we gave you a worst case, a whole, a way worse case scenario with, with contingency built into it for growth in the program as a number. But we have to, we had to start somewhere in about a number for today. Discussions, what we'll have to do is we'll look at that. We're going to finalize the budget for FY '20 so we can get that presented to the board here in the next month.
Giving us a capital cost, or a cost of shuttles, maybe a value? This way we can actually physically give something to the delegation, to administration, saying this is what the cost would be to continue the valued services for our community. And, you know, whatever that dollar amount is.
Cost per rider, cost per trip, cost per just for the vehicle itself?
The vehicles themselves, the capital. Yeah, because the idea is, you know, if I'm going to talk to, if, you know, when I talk to the delegation or anybody, I always want in my pocket and ask, you know, why am I talking to you just for advocacy or just be aware or an actual physical, hey, I need $150,000 for this to do this?
I can have those fees accepted.
I also think we should ask the delegation for matching funds. If we're, if our budget's $230,000 for this, let's look at them for half. Because they apparently say that, you know, we have the managing funds here, it's much easier for them to get money from Annapolis. So we have the money, we're already putting it out there. Now it's 230,000, can you give us 115?
Well, and isn't one of our delegates a former commissioner who approved the veteran shuttle at its implementation and is also a veteran? Seems like that would be pretty high on his priority list to push that through.
It's about capital costs. It is about what can they, what can they pay for?
He could carry the water.
He approved the shuttle system, though he was on the Board of Commissioners at that time. So he should not only know about it, but have a little pride in the service that he put in place. Delegate Shoemaker.
I think we should ask him about it.
I think we should.
I'm concerned about, once we do all the public awareness, how big this will become. We don't know what it potentially could explode into. That's an unknown. And with that, I'm really concerned about the revenue sources, whether it's state or getting in connection with the end users or some nominal connection. I'm a real strong advocate of always trying to connect the end user to the expense. Nothing is truly free. And if we can get some sort of reimbursement from the federal government, even if it's a nominal fee to the veterans, I don't feel guilty about it, that there should be some sort of connection. Even if it's nominal, we have to have some sort of financial connection of the end user to the expense.
Well, and as long as we have the permission, which we clearly do now, to navigate them in the morning, their home, this home pickup thing, we can do a lot more on our end to decrease that $25 an hour fee and get them on a regular bus. So we'll put that into place and that will be part of our structure plan going forward and how, once they're determined to be home pickups, then it will be up to us to determine the most cost-effective way to get them to the veteran service. So that gives us a lot more flexibility.
As far as booklets go, if we're going to let folks know that reduced, reduced price booklets are available, are we going to be letting them know they're available at the senior center? Are we going to have an extra, I don't know, 50 on hand for veterans or?
They would be available at the Bureau for pickup and that's.
With what we already have.
With what we already have, correct.
Okay. So I just want to make sure we're.
Yeah. I mean, but before we tell them that there's discount, because we're not asking them to pay currently, so, yeah, yeah, not right now. So I mean, just in the future, then we can make sure that we have that.
We'll look at that later, but right now, we're just switching from the veteran shuttle picking up their house to the on-demand service picking up their house, which would be less money. After we look at that, it may be that we're going to say, okay, we'll still pick you up and now you, there's a, there's a booklet you can get, a coupon booklet, and it's be $2 for the trip or whatever it is, which is, I think, is extremely reasonable.
Well, and another thing to consider right now is that we only offer a discount on our trailblazers or service to seniors and people with disabilities, not to veterans. And veterans should most definitely be included in that.
Right, yes.
And if we do that, then it wouldn't matter if they do have a disability, if they are senior, they can get on that bus, they can navigate here and get to their medical appointments for a dollar, which would be very helpful. And then potentially, if we do start charging them to get from home pickups, if they can navigate the trailblazers, they can do that for a dollar, so.
Does the Maryland Department, Department of Transportation offer any veterans' programs to, say, a bus running in the city or anywhere else?
Not that I'm aware of. I looked after we had the conversation about the veterans getting reimbursement, not that I could find, no.
The one thing that historically had happened here in the past was that the VA actually, when you talked about the scheduling of appointments and then scheduling of transportation, VA had a volunteer-based service where they had a driver that would come and pick up folks that were, and it was a coordinated effort because it really takes that coordination from the VA side of the scheduling of the appointments. That has since fallen, this is well, well before my time, years and years ago. But that has fallen by the wayside, but that is something that in other counties, the VA provided that service as well. You know, for certain individuals that qualify based on medical condition and their service connection, they would have the ability to get these appointments scheduled. Now, in my experience, it never worked like a well-oiled machine. Now, in my experience, it never worked like a well-oiled machine. It was difficult, you know, schedules got changed, appointments got canceled. But I think that we could maybe look to the VA again to question, is there any possibility of that resource, or is it still in existence but we're not aware, with certain individuals?
I think the VA worked to mitigate that issue, and that's why, because of length of time it took for veterans to get appointments, and then also the distance. So they now are allowing for local appointments in the community, as opposed to going to VA clinics and hospitals. I think that may have been a way to, yeah, minimize that effort. I don't know if that still exists or not, remember it did, but it was, it was very cumbersome and challenging to get the VA to come out and pick somebody up, so. I mean, we're, we're fortunate, we are really, again, blessed, one, with the work you're doing, but also because Baltimore is not that far, and Martinsburg, and Dietrich, and clinics are not that far. There are areas that they are very spread out, so. And that, yeah, I'm aware of what you're saying.
And, and I do want to, and I think, just to clarify from what I've heard, we are providing trips to these non-VA medical sites as the special requests come in, when somebody needs to go to a certain medical facility that may be in Towson or another location, we are providing those, as, as a special request, and we're vetting those. So that is happening now.
But those are greatly reduced, I mean, they really have. I don't know what the change is. It was typically, when a veteran filed a compensation claim, and then they had to have what's called a CMP exam, then they were outsourced to other physician practices. And so that was going on for a while, and there was a good many of them, and, and we really haven't gotten, received those kind of requests.
I think it's because the VA has woken up and has resourced their own hospitals and clinics to service our veterans better, and they, they are. I mean, which is good, I mean, we've, you know, it's been tough, but it is good, and I think maybe that's why we're seeing less private calls like that, so.
And you guys have done a great job. I mean, there's not a veteran in this county that asks for service, doesn't get it. And thank you for what you're doing there at this time, and I know we need to move ahead now to our, formalize this a little better, but up to now, it was just, I know the word was just make it happen, and you've done that, but we need to get a formal plan in place. Thank you for what you've done. Okay, got direction?
Can we put a timeframe with this transition before we leave here, so that we know when we're transitioning those rides to start as a, the on-demand, rather than?
Just a question, why couldn't it start tomorrow?
It absolutely can, so, I mean, that's what I.
Tomorrow.
And there's your frame.
Well, we wanted to update the policy to include the veterans be part of the process.
Yeah, so when they call in, I'm just, what I'll do is I'll just have my staff, and I'll direct all the calls to me, which is what I used to do anyhow, until it got a little bit easier, but for the time being, I'll just direct them back to me, so I can explain whether or not they're getting picked up by the veteran shuttle, or what that transition would look like for them, so that they're not concerned about who's picking them up, because they're pretty set in their ways, like every other transit user in the county. So, and then, just so I'm clear then, so when we're doing the demand response portion of this, what we'll do is submit our hours for billing, and then we'll have our demand response portion of that, and we'll just be included altogether. And then we'll, then we can talk about what those, the savings in hours. And will, we do that at our Veterans Advisory Council meeting? Are we going to come back together to have that conversation when we get a plan in place? What, what do we, what's the next step?
I mean, I would suggest, I would suggest over the next part of a week or so, we look at our current ridership, where they're being picked up, how we can get them to, whether it's the senior center in Hampstead, to the hub here at Burke. Give us a couple of days, you know, we, we look at it, let's evaluate with current ridership, build us in, we can work it, and figure out how we're going to track it, so this way for both, for both purposes, for checking balances for both parties. This way, we're covered, and we can also show those numbers, where we think that reduction would be based off of kind of our current ridership. This will help us develop our upcoming budget for FY '20, but it'll also help us put together a program without it just flick the switch tomorrow. At least to make sure it's thought, you know, we have our parameters in there for checking balances. But I have no problem, that's my suggestion for that.
As far as the Veterans Advisory Council, I think it's a good suggestion, I think we need to further define some of the objectives for the Veterans Advisory Council, and that's going to be a meeting that's going to be coming up soon. I'm looking forward to that, to giving them also direction from, from us. But it, it, again, as a suggestion, it may, that may be the right approach, but let's figure out how we want to shape the Veterans Advisory Council further, so.
I would suggest, I would suggest that we implement what's been suggested here over the next month or two, and then we come back to the board and relate to them how it's been going, and, and maybe offer other suggestions, or, whether it's positive, or negative, we don't know.
So the, the veterans that are now using the service, how are we going to help them to know about the direct, the service connection? Is it going to be through your office, or are we going to work with the VA? Is it something that we need to do, so that way we can start that process?
So I'm going to go back and talk to the veteran services staff, get a little more information about this process and what it looks like, and then, what I was thinking was that, then the forms, if we can give the forms along with the instructions to maybe the drivers for the veteran shuttle, to then give to the veterans, and maybe with some type of cover letter that we, you know, give them, explaining what it is that we're asking them to do. We could also send out a mass mailing, but, you know, if we can reach the people that are actively using the shuttle.
Now, can we have any of your counselors to come on the buses with them to explain the forms? Because I think that having the driver to do that, I mean, it's, it would be great for someone that's from your office to kind of do that, instead of putting that on the, on the bus driver.
I think the difficulty will be is that I won't be able to send somebody every day of the week. That's going to be what we're going to have to work out, because their workload will not permit them to do that five days a week, and in two different locations.
Well, if we, if we hit a list, so we have a list of all the people that we need to basically talk to, and if we can figure out when they're writing, and to get that kind of done, and we can get that list down, you know, pretty significantly, because then that's something else that we can bring to the board about, okay, we had 100 riders, all of them know what they're getting reimbursed, so that way we can actually have those numbers to come back to say what we need to do, as far as if we're going to some type of reimbursement. So we can definitely work together on that.
Sure, absolutely.
I think looking at the passengers, getting them educated, whether it's having somebody actually on the bus, or just having their names and numbers, a fact sheet, there's different ways to do it. I am concerned about stretching our resources, you know, where we're almost overkill with too many people on the, on the van, trying to educate somebody. It may just be that bus driver handing something. It's in their best interest, the drivers, the passengers, and our veterans, to understand it best. And then having a phone number, saying, hey, if you have questions, it's on the phone, is that, or, you know, then, maybe the way to do it, as opposed to, I, I'm just concerned about stretching our resources. I, I.
The other suggestion there, I, I would think is these riders are also going to a VA medical site, so as they're on the bus, if they're able to read on the bus, they can take that into the VA site and get some direction while they're there, would be my hope as well, to, to further utilize their resource. I mean, we're, we're helping with, with the assistance on our side to get them to their medical appointments, but I think the VA has a part in this as well. And, and we need to make sure that we're having them do what they can on their side to help educate these individuals about the programs that they have. I mean, we certainly will on our side, but I think they could be a, a resource too.
All right, we just ensure that we have anybody with visually impaired or any other disability.
Well, on the full side of that, could our drivers sit down, we have ma, a couple of main drivers, could they sit down with your staff for 20, 30 minutes to understand what it is, so, not to answer any important questions, or to steer them in a direction, but just to be able to say, this is the, you know, basics of this form, and this is what you need to do? Because they're obviously always on the bus, so maybe that would be, maybe they could understand it that way, yeah.
I mean, part of this is also breaking down the stigma of the VA. I mean, I mean, it's gone through a lot, and I do think it's going in the right direction. I think the services they do provide at the clinics and the hospitals are getting better all the time. I mean, I am 90%, you know, service-disabled, and the VA has done a lot, you know, they've come a long, long ways. So, you know, it's, it's, they have information kiosks and all that kind of stuff there as well, so you're using them, putting some of the work on them, but they're, they're prepared to do this, I think, better now than they were just a few years ago, up to that way.
Our drivers are the person these people rely on, that's the person they're going to talk to for an hour and a half, and the education of that driver is critical. And I, I commend you, yeah, they're the ones who are going to have to answer a lot of the questions, or at least tell them, call the number at the bottom to get that service, but they're going to be on the bus one-on-one, and they're our representatives out here.
That's an excellent segue, because I did want to mention before we wrap up here, because I know that's coming, that when this shuttle was implemented in 2012, we hired, we hired a driver, Alvin Tasker, to, to be our veteran shuttle driver, and he was, has been with us since 2012. Unfortunately, he'd fallen ill back in November, and he passed away this, over the weekend. So I just wanted to mention that, you know, obviously, we'll miss him a great deal, and he was an excellent, excellent driver, and a wonderful asset to our, our veteran service, and all of his clients are, don't miss him, so I just wanted to mention that.
Appreciate you sharing that. There's a lot of unsung heroes, they're doing a lot of work, they're not looking for names, recognition, they're just doing it.
And he's definitely one of them.
He was definitely one of them, he went way above and beyond, you know, for the veterans, and if they had questions, he'd call me on their behalf, and.
They would call him on his cell phone, weekend, to ask them questions.
Yes.
And actually, he was work, he was, not to give his personal information, but he was in the hospital from November until this past weekend, and so, his wife told me every day, it was really the only thing he was worried about, is when he was going to be able to come back to work, and whether or not his veterans were being taken, I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't take them, but he was very concerned if they were making it to their appointments.
And no one could do it just like him.
You know, it can't hurt to capture the successes that we're doing, and the vision moving forward, sharing it with the Carol County Times, and with the media, highlighting the services like this, you know, gentlemen provided, because they're not looking for the certificates on the wall, they're just doing it because it's the right service to do, and that's really what you're doing. So I think, you know, using the, the media the best we can, this is another avenue, maybe even doing a public, you know, a press release or something from us, saying, hey, here's where we're moving forward, and then highlighting that, so I appreciate it, so.
So we'll work on a plan, at this point, services was, we remain, anybody calls, anybody, everybody has a ride. We don't have a capacity issue today with the equipment that we have. We have two ProMasters and four minivans. Sometimes it's just pulling in additional drivers when needed, when services, you know, the services may, if, if they're increasing, but ride with us, we do a great job of making sure that we maximize, any bus that's getting the road is maximized, for the number of riders on it. We'll work on the plan, our business plan, admission statement, and we'll also sit back and give, or we'll send out the capital cost for new buses, replacement buses, to, to meet future capacity needs, to what we're going to be looking for, either for asking for funding from the state, or would it be something that, just for your own knowledge, as we're looking at our capital project, of what these costs are going to be coming up in the near future, so thank you. Is there anything I missed?
I think the only question I have is that, if we're going to encourage veterans to apply for the, the reimbursement with travel, how are we going to communicate to them that we kindly ask that they consider donating that money back to the veteran shuttle transportation?
I don't think.
Right.
Until we start charging them.
Yeah, when they, if they just get some money back, that's good for them, but if, when we come back and we visit this, if we're going to start selling them coupon booklets, that's how we will, we would handle that.
We need to get a handle on what rate and reimbursement all that is too, and look at it, and determine what type of fee we would want. Also, I was wondering, is there any way that's actually memorialize that driver in some form or fashion? I don't know what the county normally does.
I don't, that would be amazing if we could, his family would agree.
Maybe come back to some suggestions, name a shuttle after him, or something like that, something to leave his legacy with the.
The shuttle has been named after a prominent veteran.
Okay.
The Mad Dog is the name he went by, and that shuttle was dedicated to.
So it's something that does get.
Yeah, something along those lines.
We could have an Alvin bus, instead of the bus number.
We can, we did same with Mad Dog, we could do something similar, that'd be really cool. And that could be fun for the Veterans Advisory Council.
Because he certainly touched your life, we can all tell, and I'm sure he touched hundreds of other veterans in your system.
Definitely.
Yeah, that, that could be definitely something to bring up next week.
Okay, good, all right. Do I don't need a motion to adjourn?
Never had a motion to get started.
To work for ending.
Let's get the heck out of here.
Thank you all.
Thanks for your time.